Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Adresson.
Here.
Mr. Hall isn't here. I don't know if he referred from him or not, but I can guess. Um, why he isn't here, but uh, he's not. Mr. Hoag.
Present.
Mr. Murlington. Appears to be absent. Ms. Dabrowski.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Nixon.
Here.
And I'm Mr. Conley. We have a. Planning official, Mr. Moore is here tonight, and of course we have. Mr. Womack, the manager, and Ms. Johnson, the city clerk. The next thing that we have to do is we have to look at the um, minutes of the meeting from October fourth. See if we can approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from this one.
For.
Anything we need to address on there? Hearing none, hearing nothing, we'll um. Take a vote on that. All in favor of approving the minutes of October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Please signify with aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have to approve tonight's agenda. Page one in your packet.
Conley, I did present the board with a copy of the Fishbeck. Uh, State Act and Stormwater Design Review Letter regarding the. Uh, one ninety north Main Street property. Um, don't believe it made it into your agenda packet. I guess I would ask that be added for future reference.
Uh, do we need to make any amendment to the agenda to certify that? Like since it's in the packet and not on the agenda itself?
Uh, yeah, I guess add it to both the agenda and the packet. Now, uh, my suspicion is that this might come back to you, and if that's the case, I'll simply add it to the next agenda. Or record keeping purposes, if it doesn't, we just need to add it, uh, I guess in the minutes.
Okay, so. We just need a motion to um, approve the minutes with this additional October thirty-first. Memo from Fishback.
Mr. Conley, do you mean approve the agenda with?
Yeah, you're right, agenda. I'm sorry.
Sometimes I wonder if uh, I was listening.
I wasn't listening to myself. I'm more concerned about the thing.
Add the Fishback uh, addendum to the packet as well.
Second.
Anything further? Okay, all in favor? Uh, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Okay, brings us to item six, public comments. Those students wishing to, students, wow. Game one like to take over. I just gotta, the, the students. I don't know where that came from. I haven't been, uh, well, anyway. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. Uh, this is the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission, except we will have another um. Another public hearing coming right after this, so that's technically true. Uh, please state your name and address for the record if you would like. You want online? Okay.
On credit.
Uh, hearing none, we'll move on to item seven, conflicts of interest, next part to a communication inquiry. Do we have any of those to report this evening? Hearing any, we will move on to uh, scheduled public hearings, item eight. We have um, a public hearing for special land use for Jennifer Rursma, one ninety north Main Street. The applicant is seeking special land use approval for a licensed childcare center. So I'll open up that public hearing and give anyone that would like to speak on that the opportunity to do so.
So normally, yeah. Probably your first planning commission, right? So normally this is for members of the public who can get up and say whatever they want about your proposed thing. Then we'll go over the actual project itself and they will invite you up to speak. But you can, as a member of the public, come up and talk if you'd like.
You're in no way restricted. You can have the same time anyone else has to speak on your project, but we're gonna give you more time to speak on your project. Okay, seeing no public comment, then I will move to close the public hearing, not move, I'm just closing the public hearing. And we will move on to the site plan part of this. And for that, I know that we uh, from the correspondence that we received already, I knew that there were some. Big items that still had to be addressed on this. Uh, I'll ask Mr. Womack or Mr. Moore. Kind of to bring us to up to speed on where we are at today and.
Okay.
What to do moving forward.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give you some background. Um, uh, I. I was on vacation last week. I didn't put together the normal reports I would. Uh, but I was in communication with Mr. Moore who took down most of my ideas and put them into his report, so. Uh, I'm going to agree with Mr. Moore's reports on what we think might need to be addressed in another draft. Uh, but that being said, I've also been working with Ms. Rursma, I apologize for that, Ms. R. Um, and she's done an excellent job. She's been proceeding mostly in pro per on her own. Uh, she has been bringing in a little bit of support as we kind of get to the final details. Um, so she wants to convert the property at one ninety north Main Street, which used to be Look Insurance Building into a child daycare center. Uh, that is obviously a very much needed use uh, in the city, so I think that's great. Um, but she is seeking to expand the parking lot, which is going to be required for this uh, use. Um, and so the main focus is on the parking lot and then how are people going to circulate through the parking lot and get into and out of the building? So, um, that being said, and Mr. Moore, I'm sure will have some much finer details for you, but uh, you know, there's some minor issues about. I'd like to see the parking lot be set off about five foot from the sidewalk. Uh, that's something that was not always the case in the city, but it adds a significant amount of both safety and beauty to the parking lot areas. Um, there were some uh, issues with drainage, but I think um, I worked with Fishback on that. I think we've resolved most of those issues. Um, but I think my biggest concern, and again, Mr. Moore will address this in more detail. Is even though I think the parking lot meets the strict requirements of the parking ordinance. Um, it does not take into account a number of things I think you would see in a child daycare center that you would not see in a normal retail type business. Um, for example, you know, I think we're gonna see a rush of parents dropping kids off at seven AM or seven thirty AM. So you're gonna need like forty-five parking spaces at that moment in time, but not the rest of the day. Um, I think you're gonna see a lot of, you know, cars trying to pull in while other cars are trying to pull out and kids are crossing the sidewalk and whatever. Um, I just want to make sure that whatever uh, is the final situation is the safest for everybody involved. Um, I also don't think that this parking lot, and there's some site constraints here, so let's not pretend that they've got all the way into the world, but. Uh, there's some site constraints which I think will make it difficult to accommodate larger vehicles. So uh, one of the things that Ms. R. Um, said at the last time we talked was that she was thinking about having a senior citizen component. Uh, where there might be some interaction between the child, the children and senior citizens, which is great. Um, but my concern then becomes, well, how are the senior citizens getting there? Um, if you're going to have them all driving their own individual vehicles, now there might not be enough parking. Uh, if on the other hand, you have maybe a fifteen person van or a bus of some kind. That vehicle's not gonna be able to turn around in the parking lots that's being proposed. So thankfully, there is a possible solution. Uh, this property abuts North Park, the city's North Park. There's a pretty sizable parking lot in that location. However, uh, that park has not been maintained through the years because it's a very underutilized park. And there is no sidewalk between the park and this building. So uh, I think at the very minimum, this board needs to determine whether uh, the parking lot that's being proposed is sufficient for the use that she's proposing. And if not, whether the board would accept uh, North Park as a backup parking lot. Which of course the city council probably have to sign off up to as well. And as part of that, either require the installation of some kind of sidewalk. Or require the deferral of a sidewalk installation that must be shown on the site plan for future use. Well, uh, enough talking for you guys to understand the background?
Gives us, yeah, I think it gives us a really good idea of what, what kind of salient issues are here.
So I'm sure Mr. Moore can go through his report and give you some more of the finer detail. Uh, there are some landscaping and lighting issues. It's a pre-existing site. We don't want to run them through all the requirements. Uh, but part of what we're doing in the city is trying to make the city look nicer by requiring people to invest in their properties. Um, so I would like to see a minimal site plan, um, sorry, a minimal landscaping plan and minimal lighting plan. Um, and some other things.
Um, so just kind of by way of background, the property is zone B three. It's highly business. Um, in that district, childcare centers are permitted uh, with special land use approval by the planning commission. Incorporate some additional requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. Um, we also noted this is, it's a redevelopment opportunity for this building. It used to be an insurance office. Um, so there are some limitations as far as the scope of our review, just because this is an existing building, so we're not. Too concerned, so we didn't take like setbacks and things like that into account because we're not proposing at this point to enlarge the building in any way that would modify any of its setback. Um, so Mike touched on parking a little bit, so there are twenty spaces proposed on the south side of the building. Spaces in terms of their size and the drive aisle width and the quantity are all fine. Um, you know, there's a sidewalk there that runs along Main Street. Um. We also noted, so there's, there's a spot where. When you pull into park right next to the sidewalk and you, you know, swing your car door open, that's gonna be going into the sidewalk. Um, so that by itself isn't necessarily a, a huge problem, but. Those instances, we see a tendency for people to, you know, you're not being super careful when you're pulling in. In the morning and you're parking the sidewalk temporarily, maybe longer than you should if we're gonna have people walking back and forth along the sidewalk, building. Um, we have some of those same concerns about circulation, so again, adding a small, you know, setting that back from the sidewalk, maybe five feet. It makes a lot, a lot of difference to just kind of keeping people, keeping the, the public realm and the private realm there separated a little bit. Um, we're not sure how many, uh, and this is, I think, something the applicant can a- address. We're not sure how many. Children they are proposing to receive for care, so that's gonna greatly impact the number of vehicles that are, that are pulling in. Been a little while since I've had my kids in daycare, but I, from personal experience and from talking to a lot of others. Uh, daycare services like this with three school age children. Um, typically in the morning, the parents pull in, they park, they get out with their kid, they walk inside. So the cart, so there will be a, quite a bit of traffic pretty early and then it'll slow down. Usually some picking up and dropping, dropping off that goes on around lunchtime. It slows down, then you're gonna get dizzy again before the end of the day, you know, four and five o'clock. So those are really the areas where I think. Having an, an idea for how many children are going to be there, what the circulation might look like during that time. How that's going to sort of interact with the idea of having seniors also present on the site. Those are, I guess, questions that we have at this point. In addition to that, as Mr. Womack mentioned, we're not sure. How the seniors will be getting there, what that kind of arrangement looks like. Sometimes also, there is a private, you know, sometimes these daycare centers will eventually operate their own small bus or van that take, picks up kids from school for after-school care and things like that, so again. Um, just questions about, about that. If, if it's a larger bus pulling in and out of this parking lot would be difficult at times, depending on how many cars are there, et cetera, so. Um. Just a, a, a lot of questions at, at, at this point, um, they're generally going to be safety oriented with this being a childcare facility, obviously, that's. Most important thing that we're focusing on here. In terms of landscaping, there is a row of, of Arbor Vitae around the southern fenced area between this property and the property to the south. Um, there is a little bit of landscaping shown on, on the plan. There's some future landscaping. It's not particularly detailed. Um, similarly with lighting, there's in- indication on the site plan. The recessed can lighting will run the length of the canopy over in, in front of the entries. Uh, the parking lot isn't that big, so we're not, it doesn't appear at this point that all lot, all lights are proposed in the parking lot. Um, which is fine, but again, thinking about. Wintertime, dark early, I'm not sure how bright it is there typically at, you know, seven AM. But thinking about things like that for, for safety purposes are some of our considerations. Um, so we added the standards in my report on the bottom of page two and going on to the top of page three. Walked through the special land use standards that apply specifically to childcare centers. Um, most of these are, are conditional type of things. Um. License that's re- that's required by the state. Bring the facility up to the uh, the state licensing rules for childcare services. And, and facilities, that's not something that's directly under your control, but having them provide that documentation to the city would be. Be a condition of approval if and when you get to a point where you're going to approve it. Um, signage, parking. Um, the building shall have an appearance which is not intrusive and inconsistent in color, so there's some architectural standards here again, they're not proposing significant changes to the building here. Um, so if they in the future look to modify colors, materials, make some additions or improvements to the building to the side, if that would comply with that standard. Um, documentation of sufficient classroom, play areas, et cetera, again, meeting state requirements. Outdoor play area is something that's addressed by the state administrator rule. We have a standard in, in here that says there shall be a sufficient drop-off space to allow maneuvering without creating a hazard to traffic flow. That's kind of a nebulous standard, so and we've talked about this a bunch, but thinking about how. Circulation is going to work on the site is gonna be something that's really critical. Last one, facilities should not operate more than sixteen hours a day. I think that's actually baked into that. At the local and state levels, but that's again, something that is, is, they're primarily just to ensure compliance. So we uh, have a short list here to conclude with um, some of the comments that I've covered already. Um, a couple of things that I haven't quite touched on yet is that um. Trash service, so the location of the dumpster would be difficult, not impossible for the waste holler to reach. In its current location, if anybody was parked there, just making sure that that's handled and the waste holler knows that there's gonna be times where they're not going to be able to hack the dumpster, so. Figuring that out would be something to think about. Um, ADA space might need to be van, van accessible that's in front of the senior access. On the site plan, there's one access for the children. There's a separate access that's farther over to the east for seniors. That's all fine, but again, just thinking about how they're gonna get in, there are some seniors that may have mobility issues, obviously, so. Sure they can get in easily um, without having to get in that particular parking lot will be important. Um, and then kind of as a general comment, I think we have the stand, the site plan that was prepared by the applicant. We have another site plan that was prepared by Feenstra that primarily focuses on grading. It would be helpful moving forward for the city to have kind of one site plan that has all of the information on it that you can approve. Um, because what they show are slightly different, and I get that they're serving different, different purposes. But for example, the Feenstra site plan doesn't show the sidewalk that runs along the north side of the parking lot, whereas the other one does. It shows lights and the other one doesn't. I don't want to get into a position where um, there's a. Future, you know, future property owner or somebody who, or there's any confusion about what improvements need to be made. And somebody says, well, the site plan says that it doesn't have to have this on it, and we say, yes, but this other site plan says that it does, and you get into this sort of confusion. It's confusing realm of not knowing what site plan is valid, what improvements are required, what improvements are required, so just for. Clarification purposes moving forward and to make Mr. Womack a little bit easier moving forward, I think it might be helpful to have. For one final site plan that contains all of these details. Um, so that pretty much summarizes my, my comments. Um, there's not a lot here in my opinion that needs to be. Adjusted, and I think a lot of it is just questions and kind of feeling out what your comfort level is going to be. Some of these circulation and fencing and parking.
Um, any questions from the planning commissioner, from Mr. Moore? Before we move on to the applicant? Okay, Ms. Rursma, did I say it correctly? Close enough. All right. Um, I'm not from west, the west side for that long either, just like the manager. Okay, if you'd like to approach, um, then I'll certainly give you that. Um, I don't know. I guess we'll start with um, it, it, are there any large differences between what they've said here and, and the way you're seeing things?
Um, no, so for the big story is the Look Insurance Building. I'm Jen Rursma. I'm now the proud owner of the ugliest building in Cedar Springs. Um, but I plan to fix that. So the building is a very large building. There's a commercial space up front and two apartments in the back. Um, all, basically all of the walls, everything is going to be knocked down and we're going down to the studs, just to make sure that there's no safety issues. It was kind of sketchy the way it was kept, so um. That's where we're at initially. The building is going to be divided into two buildings essentially. One is gonna be two, about two-thirds of the building is gonna be the childcare space, zero to five typical childcare center. The other third of the building is going to be for before and after school care. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Engedi program that used to be in Cedar Springs schools. Um, that has not been able to get back into the schools since COVID. But they are very excited to work with me and bring that into this portion of this section of the building. But it would be, Engedi was for sixth through eighth grade. This will be for all school age children. This is being run as a nonprofit and there will just be a minimal cost to parents basically for them to have some investment, like. We'll have thirty-six spots in the before and after care program. Just an investment to say, we're gonna take this spot on this day so that they're not just grabbing all these spots and then not using them if they don't have any money that they're contributing. Um, but it is going to be done by, through nonprofit. It is going to be ran by mentors and volunteers of, from the community. A good majority of them are from the local churches that are really excited to bring this back. Um, the hours between nine and three, these children are in school and the building will be used as a senior center. Um, the senior center no longer has a building and they are very excited um, to do this. They've. Were in tears when we brought it to them, so um, that is an exciting part. I currently have an in-home childcare and um. I have fifty kids on my waiting list and I have not added kids since January because there's just no point. Um, the, there is not a single childcare center in Cedar Springs School District. The closest one that we have is Tender Care, which is on Fourteen Mile, and they have two hundred kids on their waiting list. And again, they have not added kids since, she said, months. Um, it's, Cedar Springs is actually considered a childcare desert in Michigan, which is already having a huge childcare issue. We're listed as one of the worst. Um, as far as having space available, there's just not space and we get called every day. Parents are in tears because they can't go back to work because they don't have childcare. Um, so I have a passion for seniors. I have a passion for children. My current childcare, we, prior to COVID, would go to the nursing homes regularly. We would play games with the residents, read stories. They would do different crafts and some, a lot of the seniors who are starting to lose their cognitive abilities. Loved the little projects just as much as the kids did, and it was so fulfilling all around. Um, this is something that is really big over in other countries overseas. Germany and Australia have huge programs involving seniors and children. That is what I'm looking to bring to Cedar Springs. I want the seniors to be able to interact with the children at their choosing. They don't have to. If they want to be a, just a part of the senior center, then that is totally fine. But a lot of them do want to interact with the children and love to interact with the children, and I want to offer them that opportunity. Um, I have been working with my representative with the state of Michigan licensing and they are very much on board for this. They're. Actually going to be providing me with two separate licenses because it gives me an opportunity for two. To dip into grants for two separate businesses and make this a reality. Um, the community is really behind it and I've gotten so many messages of people wanting to help in all these different ways, which is fantastic. But that is, that's the big story, yeah.
You have a question?
Yes, uh, what is, and maybe this is a question for Mike too, what's the actual address that we're looking at? Because on some of. Um.
Ninety-two, according to Kent, according to Kent County G I S.
That's what I thought.
That's what I had in mind.
That is what I had originally, but then I was told, went on my application, but then I was told from the woman when I submitted it, that was, that was not correct, and it's actually one ninety.
Who's the woman that submitted?
In your office. Nope.
Well, in any case, it is one ninety-two on the G I S.
Okay, all right. I thought, I saw that, but then I see there's one ninety here and then there's one ninety and a lot of the other uh, things. And so I just wanted to make sure.
We have found in this community that people have tended to pick their own address numbers. Um, we also have two streets named the Linda. Two totally separate streets in the city named Linda.
Listen, Linda.
We have, we have the same address on the same street, but one's north and one's south. So there's all sorts of problems, but as far as I'm concerned, it's one ninety-two north.
Thank you. And the, and you addressed uh, the very first thing I was concerned about, the apartments are going to be gone, correct?
Yes, one of them, um, I've been honest with them through this whole thing. Unfortunately, the prior owner. Kind of was not honest with them and told them the opposite of what I was saying and then got very angry with me for telling them that they weren't gonna be able to stay there, so. One tenant has been on waiting lists and is gonna be fine getting out there. I gave them their thirty-day eviction papers. The other one is fuming and. Is dragging my name all over the place, but it is what it is, so.
Um, you could help me with the number of people that could be in the building at one time? Because I've heard you say something about thirty-six.
Thirty-six is for the before and after care program. The size of that building, it's thirty-five square feet per child is what the state of Michigan requires. Um, so there will be allowed to be thirty-six kids in that side. Um, in the big childcare portion, that will be allowed to have sixty. And that number varies a little bit dependent on the age of the kids. If they're under thirty months, then it's fifty square feet per child. If they're above thirty months, then it's thirty-five square feet per child, so. Sixty is the rough number that we're going with, aiming for four classrooms.
Oh, the total number of people, but if, if, if everything was maxed out and as you said, there's a huge need.
Hmm.
With senior citizens there or after-school.
Yes. In theory, there could be ninety-six kids there at a time. That does not tend to be the case from my experience in that. A lot of kids don't come until after the school age kids have gone to school or they leave before the school age kids are back from school. So I'm not expecting it to be ninety-six, but in theory, there could be ninety-six there according to state of Michigan.
Um, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead to you.
No, please go ahead.
With um, and you brought up a good point that I wanted to ask her, with the park being right there, would that be. Substantial to have the people that work there to park at the park?
We had brought up the idea of having the staff park there. Um, it. Mike wasn't sure if that would be an option, so um, I was. It would be ideal for the staff to park there rather than the kids and. It would be ideal for the staff to park there rather than the kids and having them have to walk there. If the staff could park there, but then that's taking up those spots all day long instead of just drop off and pick up. So, that would, I guess, be up to you. If it was possible, that would be fantastic.
The biggest problem there would be the city council would have to sign off on a, at least one dollar a year or something. Uh, but I also really do not like the idea of people walking in the driveway from the park to this building. Which is why I talked about the sidewalk, which obviously is a significant expense, because this is a pretty long distance here. I mean, you're talking about adding quite a bit of money, uh, to require sidewalk that whole distance. And that's three hundred and thirty feet approximately of sidewalk. Um, which is a full block. I don't remember what our estimates are, but it's going to be pretty positive.
I just, I hadn't seen anybody use that property in a long time, so I didn't even know that it would be. There would be anybody going down the road for them, there would be a problem them walking on the side of it. I just didn't know, because it dead ends and they will park there.
That once they start using it, then, then there'll be people driving up and down that road.
And it is still considered a road. Right, that's why I was suggesting workers, not the actual drop off.
It's okay for adults to be killed, just not the kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, the adults know how to, the adults know how to weave.
I'm not opposed to, I think it's a good idea and I think that's one of the reasons this property probably works. Because you have this, let's call it flexible parking space, but I would want to see some kind of safety. Uh, some safe walking area along probably the south side of the driveway, uh, for both kids and adults at some point. Of course, you guys could defer sidewalk installation, but you know how that goes, you defer it now and it just not that first.
The next question, this is probably more.
Um, how many spots are there at the park?
Uh, I can't remember, I measured it at one point, it's about, maybe twenty four.
And also, what's, what will the hours be of the daycare? I, I. My, my goal is from six AM to six PM. Um, staffing is my biggest concern, so. Those hours will kind of be a little bit dependent on assuming I can get the staff to cover everything. Um, as you know, since COVID, staffing's been a little bit of an issue. I have received a significant, a number of people who have heard of this project and have reached out. Many of them I'm very surprised by because they're teachers or other. Fantastic people that I would love to have for workers. Um, so that's exciting, but. The, my goal would be at least someday to be six AM to six.
Is there, Mike, this might be Miss Wrong Memoir for you, is there any way to add backend where they could have a pull off just for a drop off? I'm just thinking, when I drop my kids off at school, I just leave a spot where I pull up, they hop out.
There is one problem with that. Um, we had looked at doing that with the architect, but legally, the parents have to sign the kids in at a child daycare. So they need to stop and get out and walk the child in.
I was thinking if you had something up pine in the back there, it might.
Right, um, the, that might be an exception for the before and after care program. Um, CTA is about two blocks down the road and they are very excited to work with us. Um, and have offered to provide staff to walk the children there, um, from CTA to the before and after care program. If we could have staff, the volunteers that might be willing to walk the kids in the morning from there to CTA. Um, I haven't spoke with Cedar Springs yet, but there is a bus stop that is, um, just like. Um, one site over, so, um, I don't foresee it being needed for the after school kids. But as far as the younger kids, they do need to be checked in by the parent.
Any other questions?
Yes. Um, speaking of lighting, do you, um, have plans to put? Other than the can lights, which I did see was going up on the building, any other lighting like on the other side of the, uh, parking lot?
The, um. The architect actually just gave it to me, so I did not see what his, um. Lights were, I know it wasn't submitted a week in advance, so I, should I even speak to this or?
Yeah, so part of the issue is this is an ongoing development. She's got lots of drafts coming and going. Uh, she did have stuff come in today, just like I did, um, but we try not to put that in front of the board. So we don't want to get you confused about what draft we're talking about.
Okay.
So, uh, obviously we've done this a million times, she has not. Um, there are a couple of ways you guys could proceed. This is, I suspect you guys are probably pretty comfortable with this, um, but we do have some minor ongoing issues with the parking, the lighting, the landscaping. This board has in the past allowed the zoning administrator to review and accept. Um, you know, from a policy perspective, you guys are overseeing whether this is a permissible use. And then to a lesser, in my opinion, lesser extent, whether the sidewalk is wide enough, whether there's enough light. Um, so if you feel that she's on the right path, you could give preliminary approval today and then zoning approval through the city manager's office. Uh, or you could ask her to present a second draft at your next meeting.
The short answer is yes, he has two lights on the parking lot and a, um, canopy that. As much as awning canopy, whatever you want, goes across the front and the other side and there will be lights all along that spot.
Yeah, I, I was talking so she could look that up.
Thank you. Can I show you what the outside's going to look like? Just, I know it's not.
There was to see it.
Yes, I would love, would love to see it.
Assuming.
Let me show you. Yeah. I brought this for you, you have your own, hang on your fall, but.
Wow, that is a big difference. And which is this facing, this is, is that pine we're looking at?
Um, it, sorry, what was that question?
Which, which road is this? Where are we reading that from?
Um, this is, this would be the, one up top would be facing that memorial park. Um, so, the goal is, there's obviously a dispensary on the other side of that street. I don't see that being an issue, but I do want it, all of the entrance and everything to be on the opposite side. Meaning I'm putting a privacy fence up along there, just so it's. More appearance. And then this on the bottom is what spacing means.
I think it's a bold decision to go with black and white for the colors here.
Well, I was actually going to go with all black because I saw that that was what the dispensary's plan was. And then I was also going to add neon green trim around the outside, so I could match.
She's dragging now.
I, I don't want to speak out of turn, uh, but. I think we're all from reading body language up here, I think we're all. In, in, um, in agreement that this is a good thing that we need to bring to this place.
Yes.
The, and we're happy to see it. Uh, my biggest concern is just that traffic flow. Because there's a, potentially could be a lot of cars going in and out, which is good and bad at the same time.
You want to see the architect's idea for solving that.
Uh, yes.
Look at me.
I'm not, I'm not going to say no to that one, how about?
Oh. Up to you, is that?
Um, I, whatever works for you.
Mr. Conley, just for the record, neither Mr. Moore nor myself have seen this.
Yeah, and see, and this is, and, and, and this is, um, kind of the direction that I'm going. Like, I think we are moving great directions, I see lots of good stuff here. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to finalize stuff tonight, just because there are so many moving parts.
That's fine, my hope was to gain somewhat of an approval that. Um, the concern with the builder is, basically when we start gutting the inside and everything, then we're going to have. He, he's concerned, he wants to bring everything down to the studs to see what's there, because as you know, the building is, it needs a lot of work. So he needs to take all the insulation and everything out, which then exposes all the pipes. And I just kind of want the go ahead to not, just start a little bit. So that he can do what he needs to do before winter and we're having to worry about pipes freezing and bursting.
Take that in consideration, um, you, oh, you, you have a picture down there, okay. So.
Yeah, it looks really good. I didn't realize there was going to be an island in the middle.
Yeah, well, it's different, it's different than what's on the other.
Right.
You know, the traffic.
During that time of day though, I know it's busy at times.
It's welling, it's main street, it's.
And it's got where pine comes, I know.
Exactly. This is main street, this is pine.
For parking lot, um, I believe on your copy, you'll see there's a parking lot and then there's like. A drive and another drive and then I think he has it listed like drop off lane or something. When he, yes, um, he did not realize either that kids had to be, parents had to park and walk in. And so I, um, believe he is going to be taking that lane out, um, the parking lot. I could use some feedback on figuring that out and if means, or if, um, North Park is an option. I mean, obviously the less parking that I have to have, the more play area I have for the children. So, um, I'm trying to keep it as small as I can, but also safe.
Well, I, I think that having the ability to.
Yes.
And I'm not going to say whether this is going to meet all the requirements or not with the curb cut and everything, I'm not, that's not my forte and I would defer to Mr. Moore probably on that. But the idea that we can circulate within the parking lot, if that's achievable. Uh, is a step in the right direction, but I'm going to let some people look at it here a little bit that might know more than I on this.
Obvious problem, is now you have two lanes of traffic that somebody has to walk over to get from the parking area. Now, we're howl-ing over here trying to figure out ways to solve that. Um, of course, it's not marked, uh, how wide the drive aisles are. But one possible solution is you take the, uh, kind of the line that's separating the cave parking. And the two bypass, the bypass lane. Widen that to about three feet, if possible, five feet ideally. Have that crosshatch, so pedestrians can walk up and down it. Then have a crosshatched walking path across both lanes of traffic to the safety of the sidewalk. So he could steal three to five feet somewhere in there and narrow up the other lanes, that might.
Well, she said that he wouldn't, the standing traffic, that wouldn't be there.
Yeah, I, I brought up to him that I don't, don't see the point in having that. Because I don't, I really don't want parents to think that they can, sometimes with the older kids. At my own current daycare, the parents like to pull up and park and just send the kid in because they can and then I'm like, hey, no, you've got it. But, um, so, he, that was kind of a, um, like I said, he gave this to me today was, he, he. He wasn't a fan of my novice version of the parking lot and so I was trying to come up with better ways, but. I'm, I'm just not sure what to do, if, whether I should keep that there, if you guys prefer it there or. We were just looking for your feedback, I guess, on that.
I will admit, I like this design better than the other ones in our package.
Um, I, I've no- noticed in the past before too, like at CTA, they do have somebody out there. Like with traffic, I don't know, you know, if that's a possibility or not.
It would probably be a possibility to have a worker out there accepting the children. Um, currently I have fourteen kids at my daycare, I have, and then I have another, I have ten kids that come. They go and they get on the bus and then I have more kids that come, so that at one time we always have fourteen kids. I do not ever have more than three vehicles dropping off. Um, a lot of times one vehicle is for two to three children, um, so there is that component. But, um, I really, from the other, I've spoken with, um, Tender Care Learning Center. Which they are licensed for the same number of children that I'm aiming for, as well as one that is in Sheridan that just got licensed. And they have not had a huge issue with there being an abundance of cars at one time. They typically will see cars at six, six fifteen and then they'll see cars from seven to seven thirty. And then the cars will be like right before the bus comes and then it'll be like nine o'clock. Um, that's my same experience that I have now, is it seems to be in those trunks. Um, so I'm sure we're, if I multiply this by what, the way I figured it was, I have fourteen kids. If I multiply that by four, um, how many kids would I potentially, or cars would I potentially have there at a time? And I was figuring that there could potentially be twelve cars there at a time. And I should say I have been licensed for fifteen years and that is the same pattern that I have seen. All of those and I kind of base my, um, ratios that I'm allowed to have kids by, you know. Who's, who I can figure is coming and going at what time and that seems to be pretty consistent.
I don't want to be the math magician in the room, but if she's got twelve cars in the parking lot and employees, that's twenty two. And there's, I think, twenty parking spaces. So.
I think, you'll like, there's going to have to be an option for overflow somehow. Even if it's not a permanent parking spot, but there's going to have to be some kind of an option.
Well, like, like I said, I think there is probably an option in North Park, but there's going to be some things that would be required. Probably require applicants as part of, uh, doing her parking lot here to require her to maybe paint the parking lines in North Park. Um, and then put on the site plan the deferred sidewalk for the future that if it's a regular thing. That she would then be required to install the sidewalk. So it wouldn't be an upfront cost, but a year or two down the road, if it's every single day. Uh, then obviously her business is the one that's benefiting from it, she should put the safety of everybody and solve.
With the, uh, crosshatch that you're talking about, I think that's a good idea. Would it also benefit to have, like at Meyer, where they have the stop signs with the crosshatch? Would we do that there too before? So when you have the cars pulling up. And you said you had the crosshatch there to cross the lanes, would that do to have that?
I think it depends on whether she's going to have the two, uh, lanes of traffic like you've shown here or some other thing that she's talking about, maybe eliminating one of them. Yeah, I mean, we, we've never required that in the past.
Didn't really require something with Jimmy John's, if I recall.
I think that's a great idea, I, I'm fine with doing it regardless.
Could you spell it out again, because I, maybe I'm.
Okay, it's kind of that, that, you're talking about like the stop signs for pedestrians that you see like at Meyer, right, those are pretty traditional there. Um, and I know we just approved some signs, I don't remember specifically now, but when we did the Jimmy John's drive-through, uh, where they should be pulling in, uh, didn't we? Those are for cars for a yield type.
Yes, the stop at the end, before they go either way.
Yeah, there was just, it was more of a, more of a call to attention, right? To make sure they're looking for people crossing, I mean, we can't fix every single issue in the world, but having something up there, they're just call attention to. People crossing or whatever in that spot, especially when the snow flies, that's, one thing we always think about is those lines disappear.
And normally if it's adults, I mean, adults are more aware of parts, I mean, but we've got, these are going to be little ones. And even though they're with adults, we know that.
I'm, they're near the adult.
There you go.
Well, you're talking about having two kids, never happened to me.
Um, so I was just thinking that would be a good thing, like at Meyer, they have the crosshatch, but they have a little stop sign there. To make people aware, I should stop and pay attention.
Yeah, and now, obviously the applicant is obviously going to be concerned with the safety of the children as well.
Right.
So I don't think this is a situation where we have a greedy developer who's just trying to get things done, uh, as quickly and cheaply as possible.
Yeah.
She wants the safety as much as we do.
That's why I was asking you, would that be something that?
Yeah, I don't see why that would be a problem, it's something we could work with the applicants on designing something. Yeah, I don't see why that would be a problem and something we could work with the applicants on designing something to make it safer crossing there. Um, if there's only gonna be one lane of traffic, I think that probably simplifies things. Creates a little bit more safety margins for places pedestrians can be at. I am a little concerned, I know Mr. Moore is looking at it, the little portion of this, let's see, south east side. Uh, facing the detention basin. I don't know if that fits within the original footprint of the original parking lot. Um, and then I don't know if the detention basin is in any way because of that.
Relative to what Fishback just.
Correct.
It looks like this. The detention basin shown with the revised parking layout might be a little bit smaller. Not sure if they can make up for that volume. Depth or something because the part that they're removing isn't that big, but I'm not sure how much. Room they have to play with.
I wonder if removing that first, that standing traffic line, if that would kind of be able to allow everything to shift. That way a tad and make more room there.
Yeah, I, I think our biggest concern personally for me is just looking at where, how your parking system is gonna be set up. And then in case of overflow, is make sure that the safety and that travel, these are two things I personally like to see, I'm not sure about the rest of them. I think that's where we're stuck on.
I'm, I'm gonna pause for a moment and ask the final question cuz we've been in this for quite a while and there's a lot of. Um, uncertainties, there's a lot of great ideas. Uh, but not, a lot of these things aren't nailed down. So, um. I'm gonna ask, uh, just as a sprawl here, will we moving towards tabling so that this can be? Um. Resolved and come back to us with, with a lot less ifs, ands and thens and therefor's. Um, or are we trying to hammer through and come up with a conditional statement for them?
I, I would like to see an improved. There's a couple of different ones here, I'd like to see which, the, the final presentation to us along with the. You know, the additional use of the park at the end of Park Street and what that might look like.
Did, did I get a nod? Agreeable agreement there, is, are we?
Well, either way, um. Work. Working with Mike will help get that um, figured out. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I would say bring it back to us, but. Make sure that you're getting all those. Things from Mike that you need to. Get the site plan.
I don't know how all of this works, am I able to do work on the building since that part isn't in question? Prior to the next one, or do I need to wait until the parking lot and all of that is?
So the simple answer, the simple answer is, uh, you don't know whether you're going to get approval or not. So it's possible, uh, unlikely, but possible. That you do all the work, spend all the money and then you come back here and they say, no, it's a horrible plan and we're not approving it. So it's at your risk to work on the building with the possibility that it doesn't get approved. And of course, you do still have to get building permits and electrical permits and all that stuff. Um, that's possible. Of course, I think the board's generally saying it's a good plan, you just have to give us some final details and we'll approve it, but. Um, that's their prerogative, not mine.
And so I don't think that we can guarantee approval at this point. Um, but I don't think we, I witnessed any huge problems other than just, there's just a lot of question marks. And it gets to be very difficult. To enforce an agreement later that started with so many question marks in the beginning. And such as to be cleaner, it'd be nice if we could take this next month to pull all this together into something cohesive. And then I think you would have a very good chance of approval after that. So if that affects you in the way.
Are, from what I'm hearing, though, all of your concerns are regarding like the parking and that sort of thing, you don't have an. Issue with my general plan or splitting it and doing a childcare and a senior center or any.
Is that all legal and is that a problem for us?
The, the requirements under your approval would be if it meets state requirements, then it's okay by us.
That it does.
You said that there's two state licenses you're pursuing, I see one of them is for a childcare center.
Yes, um, it will actually be two childcare licenses, but one will be strictly for before and after childcare.
Any other questions either direction or either?
I did have, um, I did bring. More things just to give you for. Don't want, yeah, just look at it when you can look at it, but it's just all of the information on what I explained to you about what. About the childcare and the senior center and all of that.
Okay, I think we have that, don't we, in our packet?
Yeah, I think, I think that.
It did, but I've. Made it prettier.
That's just fine.
In the meantime, while she's passing out, I'm gonna move to table this until next month.
Yes.
Need further discussion on that?
Yeah, whatever you wanna leave with me all.
And I, um. This whole.
And all in favor of tabling until next month? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, motion carries. Uh, we don't have any site plan reviews other than that, so item nine is empty. And then item ten. Uh, we would be reviewing and discussing the proposed industrial, or sorry, ten A. Review and discuss the proposed industrial building facade requirements ordinance. So I can, um, if, if you wanna present on that, we can start right now and.
Look to you. So, um, thirty-two dash five fifty-two is the non-residential design requirement, so this is an update to the discussion we've been having. Previous month with respect to the uh, industrial buildings façades. So the primary changes that we've made here, uh, we have some language. Made a bunch of changes with respect to just kind of organizing it, so. Subsection A is, is, is the same subsection B is design specification for. Non-residential buildings in the commercial or industrial districts. One of the things is, I was kind of working through this again last month and there was a little bit of confusion. Terms of non-residential districts, so we had a separate section for industrial buildings. And it wasn't clear to me when we're talking about industrial building, does that mean industrial, any building in the industrial district or what if there's an industrial? Type of building in a non-industrial district or something like that, so I think some of this stuff that I changed. Is to clarify when these standards apply, so like under subsection B, non-residential buildings in the commercial or industrial district. Kind of covers everything. Um, so subsection one talks about building design, a lot of this is, is this thing, subsection two, building materials. Um, here is where we, again, some of this is, is already in there, but we added some additional language here under subsection D and E. Uh, talking, talking about, um, facade requirements, so specifically subsection E, I think talks about. Here, cladding or veneers that may be permitted. Um, similarly, we have subsection, subsection three on architecture, talking about building colors. Um, architectural variety, building walls that are longer than a hundred feet. Um, utilizing architectural features, details, ornaments, et cetera. Um, we also have in subsection four, language about exterior HVAC and other mechanical systems. Um, this is all, I think largely in there, uh, presently, I think there's a. Some additional standards, so. It looks like I lost a, a, uh. On top of page three, top paragraph, a subsection C, C should have entered down onto a new line, we have some. Additional standards that apply only to industrial, this is mainly what we've been talking about. Um, the sheltering element is under subsection one. Um, that's something that we discussed at the previous meeting, having an entrance feature of some kind for the main entrance of, of the building. Uh, subsection two is this base body and cap, uh, design that we've been discussing, so the base being the lowest three feet. The body being the middle portion of, of the building. Um, cap consisting of a harness parapet on and can, can it be E or other just capable distinguishing feature? Subsection three talks about materials for wood, brick, wood, native stone, material of concrete, block, stucco, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and both of these were adding language that allows for the planning commission to exercise some discretion in terms of the materials, so. And we don't wanna give you a, a script of list that says these are the only things that you're allowed to approve if in. Five years or ten years, somebody proposes something that looks great, but doesn't fit me to the end of this little box, we want to have. Want the planning commission to have flexibility to approve it. Um, subsection four, we spent some time talking about last month where the bottom three feet, if you're adjacent to a paved surface, need to be a high quality. Materials, so we're thinking about, sometimes your forklift driver backs into your building or drives a fork in. You have a higher quality material on the lower two to three feet of, of your building, you're likely to. Um, sort of preserve the appearance of the building for a longer period of time there. Also, this enables the use of bollards, landscaping, uh, six inch old curve, et cetera. Um. Subsection five. Uh, again, talks about building colors, this is a little bit uh, similar to what was in the previous section. Subsection six talks about office or administrative interior spaces, uh, utilizing windows, so we don't have. Most of these buildings have some sort of office, we don't want those office workers. Windowless environment and again, having windows helps to improve the experience of building anyways. Then subsection seven allows for, um, a pretty. Wide amount of flexibility in terms of the size and, and materials, not specifically committed by this subsection, so again. This is looking at, um. Different designs, different materials. Something that, um. Looks good, but does, maybe doesn't meet the exact requirements of this section. Yeah, we want the planning commission to be able to exercise some discretion. Applicant can come in and say, oh, this build with, with whatever I want and you're gonna have to like it, but. Do you want the planning commission to have some legal room in here so that when somebody comes in with a. Um, perhaps it's a very nice looking building, it looks re- really sharp, but it doesn't have a discernible baseline. Maybe it has a discernible base and then the middle part of, of the building goes all, all the way up to the top, maybe. Other structural feature that makes it look really good and you're pleased with it. You don't want to undermine a creative design like that. Satisfy some requirements we have. Then this departure from standards is, um, again, there to. Provide the flexibility that you need. What a lot of us would consider to be sort of a common sense decision of something that looks good. In with what the city is trying. Oh, so are there questions with this, or I don't know if, if the woman, if you want me to comment or question about.
Mr. Womack, while you're looking at that, I was just going to say to the audience members, you are free to stay or go. Whichever you like, this is an absolutely free country and a free meeting and you can be here as long as you want. But we're going, we're going to be doing boring things for the rest of the night and you're no, under no obligation to stay for it, it's up to you.
Well, she was just really enjoying.
I just wanted to make sure, cuz I know how, you know, I'm awkward all the time, so I know how it is to, to not know what I should be doing. That's clear. You can, you can do whatever you like.
You just know that sometimes people don't wanna get up and walk out of them.
You're not in trouble if you leave.
If you wanna hang out with, you know, us, me in particular. Um, yeah, I mean, we've gone over this a couple of times now. Uh, I am, again, I apologize, unfortunately, I was on vacation last week, I didn't get a chance to read through the section. Uh, that Mr. Moore is talking about regarding, um. And, and he has a good point. Uh, about buildings that might not be industrial in nature, but located in the industrial zoning district. So I, I haven't reviewed that language, if you guys have had the opportunity to do that, comfortable with it. Um, I think otherwise, the ordinance was getting to be fairly complete.
I felt like we were there too, but now I'm, you know, questioning my existence now that he brought that, that point up, so I just wanted to. I'm sitting here trying to.
Yeah.
Spin that through.
I, I thought it looked really well. I thought it was well-written and.
Challenges that I've been thinking about in this is, so subsection B is design specifications of non-residential buildings in the commercial or industrial district. We've called it, and then up until the last meeting, next section, subsection C. Was for, was just titled like industrial building facade requirement. So to me, that introduces confusion as to what is an industrial building. And you have what, by all accounts, is it industrial building that might be making? Or thinking about. How we're going to apply this moving forward, I don't, I wanna make sure that it's clear when these standards are gonna kick in.
So did you add language to it already, or is that what you're proposing to do?
So, so in subsection C, and this is the part, it's, it's hard to see cuz it's stuck in the. Paragraph on the top of page three, so I changed the section header. Redesign specifications of non-residential buildings. That of industrial building. It's, it's a subtle change, but I, I hope that it's a little bit easier. Um, we might even want to consider modifying subsection. E because it also applies to the industrial district. We have a little bit of duplication of language here, so.
Sounds like a city planner who's not quite ready to pass the ordinance, recommend the.
Right.
Um, so I guess it sounds like we just need to do a little bit of work on the language to specify whether these standards apply to. All buildings in a industrial zone or more accurately when they apply. Um, which, you know, we're not in a rush per se, uh, but. The city did just complete its West Street project, uh, we anticipate having a couple of industrial buildings in the not-too-distant future. Um, so I would like to have that done sooner than later. So I guess, does the board have any other thoughts, concerns, questions about this? And are there changes that are being discussed?
There was two spots in there that I had read and I was gonna ask, did we need it in there twice? That was about it. And. Does it talk about the paint?
Yeah, so there's the section, um, subsection C five, subsection.
Yeah, where it says black neon metallic fluorescent, but it, it's, it specifies it twice in there, do we need it in there twice or? That was the only thing I had.
I think the ordinance originally started out as, you know, here is your non-residential commercial design requirement. And then here are your non-residential industrial design requirements.
Oh.
So I had it twice, to make sure that it applied to both commercial and industrial.
Okay.
Um, so a- again. We've gone through a number of readings of this, I got lost in the shuffle.
It was just a question I had, I didn't know, cuz I didn't wanna. As you've said before, we don't need it in there and we can get it out.
Yeah, I think there might be a couple of subtle adjustments just in terms of clarifying. When each one applies, like Womack said. Probably talking about deleting and modifying like three words.
This feels like this, it's like we've, we've broken apart. One meeting or another, almost every part of this ordinance, so I feel like we're getting there and. And, um, it, it now adjusts is the minor adjustments that you spoke about and I think we're probably gonna be ready to go on this. Don't wanna speak for the rest of you, but.
Four more months and it's officially the fence ordinance again, or?
Hmm, yeah, is, is that a strategy, if we just keep, keep, uh, working on these long enough, the culture of the city will change and we'll have to start over again? Um, that's not a, that's not a actual recommended. That's not a, that's not a actual recommended source of action for anyone who might be thinking that, that's what I was saying, um but, okay. So we reviewed it, uh there's no motion that we're doing anything with it, so anything else we need to add to it? Okay. Thank you, we'll move on to the next thing, um ten B. Um review and discuss the minimum maximum parking requirements in the zoning ordinance for commercial and industrial uses.
So this one's pretty simplistic, um we've talked about it's uh in the past, I think we went over it in detail at the last meeting. Uh you know, you, the current ordinance language just isn't wrong enough, in my opinion, to give this board unfettered. Uh ability to make the determination about how many parking spots are required. Um I think the new language does a much better job of that. Essentially, what the new language is going to do is say, you've got this, you know, whole list of requirements for if you're gonna use a building for this purpose, you need to have X number parking space. But. The board is not required to follow that, but that is the starting point. So it then shifts the ability to uh set the final number. To the applicant having the ability to say, hey, look at my other seventeen stores, I only need twenty and your ordinance requires thirty. So um the board would then have the option to say, okay, we've heard the evidence, we understand that these other twenty stores, blah blah blah. Uh we find that to be convincing, um and then put it on the record that the reason you're deviating from the requirements under our ordinance. Is because you've been convinced by evidence that's presented to you. That was a lot of words, but that's kind of the the intent of the change of this ordinance. You do have standards, but you can be convinced otherwise by evidence submitted on the record.
Questions or concerns?
I just want to clarify, but if we had, say, owner A. And he said, I only need twenty spots, he sells that building. Owner B wants to put in a business that needs thirty spots. But he's gonna try to come in and say, well, it only needed twenty before.
Well, uses of the building are specific in particular to the type of use. So if it's two retail spots, under the ordinance, it's gonna say you must have one parking space for every four hundred square feet of gross usable area. So if by that standard, in the size of the building, it says you only need twenty parking spaces. Then it shouldn't matter what type of use, uh if you have those twenty parking spaces.
Okay.
On the other hand, if the standard say you have to have thirty parking spaces. But you deferred it and only allowed twenty based on the previous submission of data saying, you know, my. Business A only has twenty customers, whatever, and then business B comes in and says, well, I should only have to have. Well, no, the standard says thirty, so you have to show us by evidence, just like the last guy did. Why you can get away with only twenty.
Okay.
And if you're not convinced, then you can require him to put the ten extra spaces in.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled with this, this is exactly what I was looking for the entire time. The ability to have standards that are still are meaningful, but the ability to break the standards when I'm in sense and the evidence.
I just want to point out that some very smart person put in uh this phrase, pertinent. Pertain improvements to the site that will reduce motor vehicle parking requirements. So this is going towards bike racks, uh electric car charging stations, things like that. So you can take those into consideration when you're counting the number of parking spaces.
Oh, okay.
And that's something that we had asked for, so.
So uh if you have no proposed changes to this one. It looks like it's in final form, uh you could make a recommendation of the city council, uh let's say. So uh then we'll set public hearings at your next meeting, uh cause I anticipate we'll probably have the industrial side one done as well. Um then we can make a recommendation at that point.
Um moving on to item ten C, proposed solar energy systems regulations.
Did that make it into your packet?
I see on page sixty-two, some definitions. And regulations on page sixty-three. If it's not ready for us, or.
I will let Mr. Moore talk about this one.
Okay.
So this is, this is not in 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 an ordinance format, it's more just for dis- discussion purposes. This is what we would be looking at for some kind of a solar ordinance. So the first section here on page sixty-two of your packet definitions are just a bunch of terms that we would add to your definition section of your zoning ordinance in section thirty-two point six. Um this only applies because you don't have a lot of physical land area here, this is, this only would apply to. Small scale systems on individual lots, we're not talking about a utility scale large. Some of those are typically encompassing now multiple thousands of acres, and so we're not gonna see one of those. Um so solar energy collectors or systems and the associated definitions are on page sixty-two. Uh the next page is where we 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 would get into some of the regulations for them. Um so this doesn't apply, it's something that's less than five square feet, so if we're talking about a very small. System that's powering a very small, you know, device on somebody's property, then not actually generating electricity for operation. Or use of the house, that wouldn't apply here. Um this also uh applies primarily, I think, to. Um well, this does apply primarily to either building mounted or ground mounted systems. So under two A, a small scale system shall be permanently and safely attached to the building, comply with all applicable buil- building codes. Um installed, maintained, and used in accordance with the manufacturer's specifications. Uh be neutral in color and substantially non-reflective of light. Not be installed to. So that sunlight or glare is reflected onto neighboring dwellings or on adjacent roads. Building mounted systems shall be finished so that the exterior appearance is compatible in terms of materials, color, and general construction with the terms of the structure. Um in residential districts, the collector needs to be mounted at the same angle as the roof itself without angle adjustments. Basically, what that means is if you have a roof pitch that's like this, you don't want the solar panel that stands up three feet off the roof, is at an angle going in the opposite direction or something like that. You want something that basically is mounted right flush to the roof itself. In commercial and industrial districts, in those cases, we have uh flat roofs sometimes. Those could be mounted on a flat roof, but not extending the top of the collector more than three feet, three feet above the height, so we're not. Extending the height of the structure that much to accommodate solar panels, so. You're talking about a solar panel tilted this way, measured from the roof, the top of the panel would only be about three feet.
So in subpart F, it says shall extend more than three feet.
Shall not extend.
And then subpart B, while you're thinking about it, which E, F, G, A, B. Um there shall be no limit to the number of ground mounted solar energy collectors on a lot.
Yeah, so a couple of these, so um with some of these ordinances and one of the items for discussion here would be. You want to allow, so this primarily is talking about building mounted. Communities allow ground mounted units in addition to those. Communities are less restrictive on how many solar panels are permitted on commercial or industrial properties as opposed to residential properties. It's all discussion items for you guys at this point, we're not, we're a final ordinance right now. It's just kind of two questions that this brings up, one is, do you even want to allow any kind of ground mounting unit? Either on a residential property or on on a commercial or industrial property. Are some communities that are allowing ground mounting units, if you have a half acre or an acre. Have a room in your backyard, for example, and somebody wants to put up a solar. Help power their house, some communities are saying, yeah, no problem, sounds fine. Others would say, nope, let's just keep it mounted on the building, we don't want any additional structures. Similarly, along the same lines with commercial and industrial uses. Um there's an appetite for allowing additional solar panels on industrial buildings, on commercial buildings. Properties. Um in some cases, they're getting somewhat creative in how they're constructed, you know, there's a. You know, carport, there's the roof of the carport might have. You know, a spot out back where they have some extra space that's not occupied by a building right now, so they want to have. Thousand square feet of solar. Some of the ordinances we've put together permit up to, you know, five or ten thousand square feet worth of solar collectors on an industrial property. They have room for it, so. I arguing either way, just making some observations for sort of what. How many to allow in what districts, how much area they should take up.
And not to get ahead of ourselves, but this is potentially uh an ordinance that people might be concerned about. We might want to consider having a public forum on this issue.
That was um. That's going the direction that I'm going in my head at least, I I was. Not gonna lie, I'm a proponent of putting solar panels on everything I possibly can, but I wanna know what the other side is.
Well.
Cause I feel like I must be missing something here. That's what the negatives are.
Not to be the voice of conservatism, but uh I think there is something to be said about, at least in the residential district. Uh limiting uh solar panels to on structure. Uh having a round based solar panel array in your front yard is going to look horrible. Uh even in your backyard, I think it would look horrible, so um you know, I I'm with you, I think. Ultimately, this is good for the planet, uh it's good for the individual property owner, but we do have to take a certain amount of aesthetics into account here. Um and of course, it's way easier to have a restrictive ordinance that then is expanded in the future. Versus a very liberal ordinance, which is unrestrictive.
So the primary argument is this is aesthetic.
Right.
Primarily, yes, but also ease of uh, you know, non-conforming use.
Cause I'm there, I'm there with you, that's that's what I was thinking the whole time was, cause you see some. That can stick on the side of houses and some that can stick on roofs, and then I'm like. Well, what if somebody plasters their entire house, how's that gonna look, so I was thinking we may have to limit how many on a house, or. They can only be on a roof, and like you said, lay in with the pitch of the roof. And not on the side of the house.
Now bless their hearts if they have the money to cover their entire house with solar panels, especially on the areas that are not hit by the sun. Um but you're not wrong, people do silly things sometimes. So, yeah, I I agree, I think at least in the residential district, we should probably have some language that refers to where they can put them and how much they can put.
Did we interrupt you in the middle of?
So on this, yeah, on on the third page, we have a bunch of thoughts about the ground mounted units, so. And what you see here is an example, this is on page sixty-four of the packet. Um an example of regulations that we have prepared for other communities when it comes to ground mounting. So if you don't want to allow ground ma- mounted mounting units, then we can forget about all this for now. Uh but a lot of these, you know, rear yard only, uh backs, um that may be in the ground. There are some communities where people have been asking for these already, typically they're in communities where there are larger lots than you have. Here, so that's obviously it's not, it doesn't, but doesn't apply everywhere. Um but there's definitely interest in this, um residents, businesses. So having, again, this is just for an open discussion among the planning. It's appropriate for Cedar Springs.
Questions or concerns?
Very glad to see it.
So what, this is just a preliminary thing, is there anything that you need from us specifically tonight to move forward?
Well, would you agree with the sentiment that we just elucidated upon, which is in the residential section? House mounted, roof mounted, but not ground mounted?
Yes.
I guess I'd like to hear what people had to say in the public, right?
Well, so.
Cause we're gonna have that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Part of the problem with the world is you can't go out there and say, what color, right, should I, you know, peep the whatever. Uh you have to go out and say, would you like blue or green, uh because if you present too many options, then you get muddled down in discussion. Um I think, it's my opinion, I think it's easier if you go out and say, well, here's what we're proposing. And then you say, public give a speed then. Now some, if the public comes in and says, we really desperately want to have ground mounted units. You know, then that opens up discussion, but everybody comes in and says, yeah, looks good to us.
I'm not against ground mounted units, so, I mean, especially if somebody has a giant side yard.
Yeah, I I'm not against it if they have room.
Yeah, if there's space, I don't have a problem with that, so.
Yeah.
I I don't really want to see that eliminated, I'd love to give people options, I have it, not limited to just a roof.
When would we be thinking of having the public hearing on that, so we throwing that?
Oh, this is distant future.
Okay, so we still have time to. To uh continue to think about this and and move through some of the possibilities and the options.
Is there anything that you saw in Mr. Moore's uh draft that you particularly did not like?
Maybe a a small question here about the, I understand the the five square foot limit on. Anything under a five square foot panel. For like a low voltage application. Is that an aggregate five square feet, if a person had multiple things they were trying to do, or that's the. That's the only question I have on that.
I guess, I hadn't really thought about that too much, typically, it's just meant to excuse, I guess, one or more of those things, as opposed to someone could. Take that to an extreme degree and have a. The intent here is that if you're gonna use it to, you know, for a net metering purpose. Home, that would trigger these kind of. Using it to, you know, charge a battery or whatever. Or a light or something at your property, uh you know, a trail cam or something like, we're not gonna worry about.
You're talking about like the little lights that people put along their driveway or whatever, I think that's right, we don't really care about that, we care more about. Something supplying a hu- a building, I should say, with significant amount of energy from the sun.
For me, the difference, yeah, for me, the difference is whether you plug it into the grid or not. Whether it's separate from the grid or plugged into the grid, if you're running all low voltage, for instance. If a person had a shed, a decent sized shed or a garage even, that had a a large amount of. Front edge or a large amount of roof line that they could put several twelve volt, they're not twelve volt when you start, but. Several of the low voltage um solar panels, and they decided to, instead of running a line to their house to light their garage. To light their garage, the entire thing with just batteries and the solar panels, it would be more than five square feet, but we're not attached to the. And it's, that's a, that's a usage that I could see somebody doing. Maybe not a garage, but some kind of accessory building that's not attached to the to the main building.
Like a voltage limitation thing we can put on there?
I was gonna say, so just looking at it from a policy perspective, what are we really talking about here? Um on one hand, you know, we want people to have these things, you know, well. We require uh electrical permits, you know, if you're gonna be plugging in some serious electricity, we want to make sure that.
Well, I mean, we're not talking about serious electricity as in amps, or as an, as in. It's a twelve volt system, so you, it's almost impossible to shock yourself with a twelve volt system in a way that could hurt you. The the car, it's it runs on car batteries. So we're not talking about stepping it up to the kind of voltage that would be dangerous, it's the same voltage that you run all of your. Low voltage lights on. There's a lot of people that do that for off-grid uses. Now, I understand we're not gonna have a ton of off-grid uses in Cedar Springs because we have the grid, but. If a person decided to put. But if a person decided to put multiple. Uh, you know, the the two by four square foot things on, and they were in no way attaching it. To the one twenty, two forty volt system. There is no, I mean, there's very little concern as to the safety issue. It's more of an aesthetic issue at that point.
Well, yeah, I think you guys are tasked with keeping the aesthetics of the community up as well.
Right. Under the, under the way that this is worded, if a person has more than five square feet, they have to get an electrical inspection. They have to get a building inspection. If I'm interpreting this correctly. If this person is doing an entire low volt system just off of the botaics at the site. And it meets all the other requirements, being flat against the roof and all that, would they still need to do that?
Well, so we're essentially talking about two separate issues too. One would be the planning and zoning side, which I do through, you know, zoning permit. Make sure it's mounted to the roof, make sure it's angled towards the whatever. Um, and then there is the building permit side, which is electrical permits or whatever else. Um, you know, it could be as simple as saying, well, are you gonna keep it a twelve volt system? Are you gonna run it through a uh?
Right.
Yeah, what do you call it, alternator or something and?
And this is not a hill I wanna die on, but there's no, it's not, it's not delineated here, the level of voltage. And because they're truly two separate things, they're two different things completely.
Yeah, I mean, oftentimes that's pretty much what I do in my office is try to determine, does this need an electrical permit or not? Um, and it it's not easy sometimes, so. Yeah, I I don't see that as that big of a problem, but we can certainly work on the language, make sure it's a little bit more clear or.
I suspect that if a person really wants to do it, they're pretty easy to do. On their own, you know, they wouldn't drag a whole lot of attention to themselves, but I'd rather have it.
Oh, yeah, we find all sorts of that too.
I exactly. I'd rather, I'd rather have it clear in there what they can and can't do in a reasonable way.
Wanna write the law that's easy to understand and why? No, how dare you?
I'm gonna give up right now. Okay, I'm keeping us here too long on this. Is there anything else anyone would like to add or or subtract or amend on that?
No.
Excited to see his work on this.
Okay.
You broke my head.
Enough. So uh, moving on to item D. Uh, motion to approve resolution twenty-two zero-one, uh, regular meeting dates.
So December fifty-fifth might be difficult.
December fifty-fifth?
Yeah.
And how did I not see that?
Didn't see it either. I see it.
Oh, it's there. You're right.
I didn't see it either.
I think by the time I got to down to December, I was like, yeah, sure, it's good by now. Okay, we'll we'll let December fifty-fifth handle itself.
Yeah, I'll make me, I'll make that motion.
With the correction.
With the correction, yeah.
All the other dates, make sense to everyone? Okay, all of, all in favor? Please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? There's our calendar. Okay. Um, item eleven. Open discussion of issues not on the agenda. Uh, A, correspondence. Twenty-two calendar, this is the same um. Correspondence for the Zoom meeting that we always do. Anything else we need to add to that? Uh, then item B, uh, staff comment, city manager.
Yeah, so it's not often that the applicant sticks around through the rest of the meeting. She must really enjoy the torture. Um, but I would comment that she's been easy to work with. Um, it's nice to have an improper person who uh really. Trying to meet the requirements. Um, and uh. Given that she's not a professional planner or architect, she's done an excellent job. Um, I think we'll have a good business plan for you guys, uh, and site plan at your next meeting. Um, and of course, I don't think in these six years I've been doing this that we've had a single, maybe one, that went past two meetings before approvals. Um, I anticipate she'll get approved at the next meeting. Um, and other than that, I guess we all had a good happy Halloween. Um, perfect weather and we're getting into the holiday season. And don't forget to vote.
Oh. People, if you stay to the end of the meeting, normally you get appointed to whatever empty seats there might be. Really, that's where we get our people. Um, uh, see, uh, staff comment, city clerk.
So he's making up. Oh, it's Mike who's making up the addresses. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, I mean, I I go by what's on. I don't know where one ninety might have come from, but you know what? Look. There's what's in the parcel viewer. Then there's what the post office thinks it is. Um, and then there is what the citizen said, you know what? I kinda like one ninety. I'm just gonna.
What is it? Hey, then um, now that that pot's been stirred, moving on to planning commission members. Any comments from planning commission? Well, I will, I will um thank everyone for coming in tonight and for. Sticking with us for the last ninety-six minutes. This is gonna be over soon. Um, moving on to the city council representative, I think that's you.
I don't even remember what we're doing. I think that we're getting the um multifamily. You um units taken care of. Um, that was, that's been a big thing that's been going on. Other than that, um, we didn't really have that one meeting this time. We were still hacking the um. Hotel or the hotel, the um apartment complex, cause with the sole and township. Kind of tax, the taxes, trying to get them to take some of the burden and. Um. They aren't really that willing to so far, so hopefully we'll figure something out. But other than that, we didn't really have much more than that on our docket.
Thank you. Uh, item thirteen, report of the planning consultant. Do you have anything additional for us, Mr. Moore?
I do not.
Hey, in that case, item fourteen has adjournment, so we're adjourned. Like your families or whatever you like.